We're good?
Okay.
No, you're good. Okay, welcome to our Harriman City Safety Enforcement Area Meeting tonight for the 27th of August. We're going to start with a public hearing in consideration of a resolution amending the Harriman City Safety Enforcement Fiscal Year 26 Budget. Kyle.
I've just got a couple of budget requests tonight for you, for your consideration. The first is, as you know, we did have a Truth and Taxation Hearing at the last meeting, so we do need to amend our property tax to reflect that increase. In addition to that, the county, as part of their process, does what they call an RDA equalization, which basically means since last tax year, the fire safety area started participating in the tax increment projects in Harriman. They needed to do an adjustment to make sure that we didn't receive less revenue than we were supposed to. When I initially called the county to get a budget estimate, my understanding of how the process worked is different than how it actually worked, so I was off to the tune of about $900,000, which, yes, that's significant. Good news is it's in a positive direction, so that will allow for additional funds down the road when we need to build those additional fire stations. In addition, I am requesting a motor vehicle and lieu adjustment, just looking at the actuals and how much we've been bringing in. We're finally at a point, we have a few years of history, I can see a trend on that, so I'm better able to budget that. And then, because we do have some excess funds, is not the right word, because they are going to be used for projects, there is a cash balance in this fund, and it has earned more interest than I was initially anticipating. And even with anticipated lower interest rates, I still think we can increase the interest income budget due to that cash balance. And with that, that really is the crux of the request tonight. Are there any questions for the hearing?
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. You know, comment, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Tara.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I'll look for a motion on this item, then, unless there's any discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R25-05, amending the fiscal year 2026 Harriman City Safety Enforcement Area Budget.
Okay, motion by Tara.
Second.
Second by Sheri. Tara?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
I know vote yes as well. That motion carries. Look for a motion adjourned this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now go to the Harriman City Fire Service Area Meeting. We'll start with Item 2, a consent agenda. Look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Teddy, second by Sheri. Tara?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
I know vote yes, that motion carries. Item 3.1, Public Hearing and Consideration of a Resolution Amending the Harriman City Fire Service Area Fiscal Year 2026 Budget. Kyle.
Thank you, Board. So similar to the Safety Enforcement Area, due to the tax increase that was adopted at the last meeting, I am proposing increasing our property tax budget to reflect that increase. So, as an FYI, the rate increase was about $148,000, and the difference between the $1 million and the $148,000, I misspoke in the prior meeting. That RDA equalization was actually for the fire service area, not the Safety Enforcement area.
You said fire.
Yeah, I got my service areas, I got my areas mixed up. And then the motor vehicles, it's the same as the HCC, where we have some trend information, and it is coming in higher than I was initially budgeting. On the expense side, the main one is moving the fire station 103 budget from the HCFSA budget into the general city budget. The reasoning for that is, I do want to make it clear who will actually own the station. The city will own the station, the contracts to build the city, or to build the fire station in the city's name, not in the district's name, so I thought it would be better to move the budget out, just to be clear, so there isn't any confusion on the part of that. So what that means is removing the budget for the project, and then doing a transfer out to capital projects, which you will see in the city council meeting, you'll see the other side of that. With that, are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Yep.
Operation and maintenance on the fire station, if it's owned by the city, the city would pay for that, and then it should be reimbursed from the district?
Could you repeat that? I apologize.
Sorry, so the city would pay for operation and maintenance of the building, since we own it as an asset, and then we would charge the district a fee for that, or a maintenance schedule fee, or whatever that looks like?
Right now, we are paying for those old and then costs right out of the district, but you're correct, we probably should look at moving it into the city, and then charging the district back, just to be cleaner. So we will need to look at that in the future.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, we will open the public hearing on this item. See no public comment, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Submit.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Sheri, second by Tara, we'll go Jared?
Yes.
Oh wait, sorry, we don't need to do a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Look for a motion on this item.
Motion to approve Resolution R03-25, amending the fiscal year 2026 Harriman City Fire Service Area Budget.
Motion by Sheri.
I'll second.
Second by Tara. Go Tara.
Yes.
Sheri.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Jared.
Yes.
I know vote yes. All the motions are going to come from the ladies tonight, yes.
We can, I didn't know if we were allowed.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're going to pause for a few minutes, we cannot wait, we cannot start our official meeting until 7:00, so we'll be on break for about six minutes, and we'll be right back. Good evening, welcome to our city council meeting this evening for Wednesday, August 27th. We're going to start tonight with a pledge of allegiance by Michael Malloy.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we're going to do something a little bit different tonight. As many of you know, last week, there were two officers in the Tremont Garland Police Department that were killed in the line of duty, and any time that impacts a different community, I think we feel it at home, as we're concerned about our officers and those that serve us. So tonight, we are just going to, if you don't mind, we're going to just take a moment of silence to honor them, and I think their families, so if you'll just join me in a moment We'll move on to Item 4.2 on our agenda tonight, city council comments and recognitions. If anybody would like to comment on that as well, I thought it'd be a good time to move into that as well, if you want to comment about that or anything else at this time. Okay, seen no comments from our council tonight. We'll move on to Item 5, which is our public comments section. Audience members, at this point, may bring any item within this city's purview to the city council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person interested in addressing the council may submit a comment by emailing recorder@harriman.gov, or by visiting harriman.gov/Agendazem Minutes, where there is a link to fill out an online public comment form. Your statement will be incorporated into the public record. So this time, we will open the public comment. Could you state your name for us, too?
Yeah, I'm David Savello. This is in regards to Item 11.1. I submitted online, but I wanted to come and speak as well. This is about the Lifetime Gym that's going to be built. I live in one of the houses that will be directly adjacent to it, and I know the MDA was approved, which means vinyl fence is all that's going to separate our houses from that Lifetime Gym. That's less than ideal, since we have to live next to this thing. I doubt most of my neighbors are thrilled, they're going to be looking at the back of a building, or adjacent to sports courts and a pool. So I think the least the Lifetime Gym can do would be to build a precast wall to give us more division than we would already have with a vinyl fence separating our property from the property that is going to be built. I've spoken to my neighbors, at least a few of them, and nobody is just okay with just the vinyl fence. We all, the ones I've spoken to, want at minimum the precast wall there. Like, the more privacy and separation we get from this unit, the better. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, David.
I mean, this item is on the agenda, actually.
Right, and David, that was our comment, too. We have not approved anything, it was just in a work meeting last week, so it is on the agenda tonight, so just so you know, it will be discussed tonight, so.
Okay, but I want to, because I know that...
No, you're perfect, I'm just saying, when you said it was approved already, just...
No, I mean, like, it's in, sorry, I misspoke.
Yeah.
But my point is that it sounded like there weren't any neighbors that were able to make the last meeting, so I wanted to make this one to let it known.
Okay.
We want at least a precast wall built.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
I just made the point that it is on the agenda, and I maybe can give him a little bit.
Okay, sorry.
So part of what we're going to discuss, and what was on our discussion for this item in the last meeting, is kind of the difference between kind of two options that we're considering, right? So the one is, if we want a precast wall, then their minimum setback is only 20 feet for a two-story building, right? So the option that we're looking at, and you'll see during that item, is, I believe, stretching that setback to 50 feet with a mounded berm and vegetation, right? And then the, and then Councilman Hodges' suggestion last meeting was, well, because our concern was still about people going down there and, you know, vandalizing the fences still, well, actually making that privacy, right? So there's still this 50-foot setback, the mound, trees, et cetera, right? But then closing that off, so the public is not able to access kind of the rear part of those fences.
Thank you, Jared. Okay, any other public comment at this time? Okay, seen none. We'll move on to Item 6, our city council reports. We'll start with Jared.
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
Other than, sorry, I'm on the fire board. Please, please, for the love, no more fires. Take matches away from kids, take what, like, this last, yeah, fireworks, just, this last couple of weeks has been insane. Please.
Thank you. Yep, Teddy?
So, I had the opportunity to travel with the Jordan Basin Improvement District, a couple of their operators, their general manager and our IT guy, out to Milwaukee. We got to tour a couple of different treatment plants, pretty impressive. We are looking at a major expansion, also some current small issues with one of our items there, one of our tools that we're using, but we want to make sure that we're investigating the way these, it's a dryer, and they're only a couple, $4 million, so we want to make sure that we're investing properly taxpayers' money, and utilizing what we need for our future plans. So seeing these two dryers in action that are identical to our dryer, although every plant's a little bit different, treatment's a little bit different, and our expansion is going to double the size of our current facility, so we need to make sure that we're going to know what we're getting into if we double down and buy the same dryer again, or do the same sort of treatment. So touring those facilities were amazing. Milwaukee is a beautiful place. Sheboygan, the capital brats, is amazing, too, so we got to see a lot of Wisconsin, because we drove across the state to visit the other treatment plant on the Mississippi side. So, lots of information, our board meeting was yesterday morning, we're going to get a full update on that and a full presentation next month, but we did talk a lot about projects. Currently, 118th is almost done, we've got some, the Miller Crossing Project, we talked in work meeting, we approved that as the Jordan Basin cost structure there. We awarded several different projects throughout the district, and we're having a pretty good year on everything else, so we're doing really good there. That's all I have to report.
Okay, Sheri?
We have, we had our South Valley Chamber meeting this morning. Wasatch Front Regional Council is there to present some of their stuff on their, what's it called, fresh look? Anyway, and the good news is they're coming to the end of their study, but the other news felt like there's going to be a few more studies, but not the same kind of study. Anyway, sorry. But it was great, the chamber is in a really good position financially, they've brought on a lot of new people, and financially, they're in a, I think they said their reserves, last year was three months, this year they're 13 months of reserves, I want to say, so financially, they're in a good spot to really start. And they said, let's not call those reserves, because that's money that we're going to start spending for, you know, promoting businesses and things like that, so. That was a good meeting, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting this morning for the Trans Jordan, transfer station. It's on, it's in Sandy, it's on 8800 South and 7th West, but I am so excited. Anybody that's ever had to take your trailer out to Trans Jordan landfill and drive out through the scary pokey stuff, you will not have to do that anymore if you want to drive to Sandy, because that will be open to the public as of October 1st. They start bringing in trash tomorrow, they're opening it first to commercial haulers, and then they'll open up to the public October 1st. And Saturdays, it will be only residential, the other times, you'll be only, I think just one lane for residential during the week, but on Saturdays, all three lanes will be for the public, so it's a little bit more expensive and a little bit of gas, but no tire poppers, I hope. Anyway, so that was really great, it was really, I think 20 years in the making kind of a thing, to finally get that to come to fruition, so it was fun to be there to see that accomplishment for them. And then, our Woodford, Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District, we had our board meeting on Monday. We discussed the letter that we submitted for intent to withdraw, and we had discussed previously about wanting to do a feasibility study to really understand how it impacts the district. Can we withdraw? And how do we meet the letter of the law as far as adhering to the special service district rules? And it was decided to send out a RFP for that feasibility study, and in our negotiations with, in our discussions with Woodford, we had discussed that we would, if it was all about just for Harriman, it made sense for Harriman to fund that, but anything that goes broader spectrum, which the board decided to go broad spectrum on that, so we understand more impacts if, to that feasibility study, that those portions of it, then Woodford will pay for those portion of it, and Harriman will just pay for the portion of it that would affect Harriman. We're going to shoot for October on that, we're hoping to have, you know, some, not have the feasibility study done, but to have things chosen, and we'll work hand in hand with Woodford on the language on that RFP, so that we make sure that the intent is agreed upon by both parties. Other than that, it was a good meeting, we have a new, our, what's your title? General Manager, I forget people's titles. Pam Roberts is the General Manager there now, and she's retiring, so September 30th, and so her, her new, you shouldn't say replacement, but the new person to fill that position will be Evan Tyrell, and they're here tonight to give some report on the, just the state of the district, and help us understand Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling. So I will let them have their thunder after this, but that was kind of the gist of the meetings.
Okay, thank you, Sheri. Tara?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you, Tara. Hodges, report briefly. We had league board meeting this, earlier this week. Seems the one area we have consensus on is, I think the board's going to adopt a policy to just allow the state to kind of mandate that all cities have an external ADU policy that can, the state, we're hoping they'll let us at least have some guardrails around it, but I think we're kind of on board saying, because we're going down, you know, we're going down that route anyway, so now the state can, you know, they can do their thing and say, you have to have a policy, but each city can have guide, you know, guardrails around it, so that's kind of the big discussion this week. Did go to the retirement ceremony, or reception for Jake Burns, so just congratulations to him on a phenomenal 20-year career in law enforcement, and good luck to him, as he now goes and competes with Jared in the financial advisor space. And then council of mayors, we had last week, little bit of continuation on the discussion about the interaction between law enforcement and the jails, and all that, and now, actually, it's going to be, so if anybody's going to the league board meetings, or the league conference in October, now it's going to be a session. We're going to do a session with the Utah County Sheriff, with hopefully Matt Dumont, and then probably a sheriff from rural Utah County, and they've asked me to moderate that session, so that'll be a really good session on the interaction of the police and jails, and AG's office, if you will, too, as well, all that, how it all interacts together, so it'll be good. So, a lot of good progress going that way. We'll move on to Item 8, we'll do a report by Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District at Nausau. Pam, we'll turn it to you for your last one with us doing this. Congrats on your retirement.
Thank you, very excited, and always honored to be here, to visit with you, mayor and council, and it's good to see the staff. Yeah, this is bittersweet to be standing here, it's exciting to retire, and I'll be able to ride off into the sunset on my motorcycle more often, and safer, because I get to ride during the day when there's not so much traffic. It's kind of crazy out there. So I don't know if... So I don't know if we can pull up my report. Yeah. He's probably working on it. So in the meantime, I know that we talked about Evan being here tonight. And I was going to do my report first, but maybe since we're having some trouble there, we can go ahead and have him come on up and introduce himself. So Evan, if you would, we're winging it here.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'll keep this a brief introduction, but as we also work out some perhaps technical difficulties on the presentation. Yes, good evening. So my name is Evan Tyrell. I will be Pam Roberts' successor here. Officially was appointed by the Board of Trustees with Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District on Monday of this week. So this is day three. So Pam brought me to the best of the best first to introduce myself.
Yes, she did.
Very excited about the opportunity. A little bit about me. I do have dual graduate degrees in both Public Affairs and Environmental Science. I'm from Indiana originally and received those degrees from Indiana University in Bloomington, Indiana. It's a Big Ten college and campus. But more relevant in a sense that I've been kind of in a variety of different public sector and public service roles in my past history. Most relevant, I served as the Executive Director for the Grand County Utah Solid Waste Special Service District for roughly four years, providing the full gamut of solid waste and recycling services. And so we managed two landfills, a transfer station, collection hauling, recycling, and other various waste diversion initiatives. And then more recently, I served as the Solid Waste and Fleet Services Director for the City of Flagstaff in Arizona under very similar capacities. And so have a lot of very relevant experience, but also some specific Utah Special Service District experience. And so Pam has expressed her confidence in me taking the reins. And I do have the opportunity to work with her over the next now four and a half weeks as a really great succession plan and look forward to working with you and providing the best service that we can. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Evan. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I see that we have the report up. So one of the things I wanted to say with Evan coming in, my, preparing for retirement, my main goal and I felt like my responsibility was to prepare our organization for the next chapter. So we had been doing a lot of succession planning. I wanted to skip to the last slide. And I'm proud of the leadership team that we have grown at the district and at the organization. There's so much great synergy right now going on between them. And I know that they're ready for this next chapter and the challenges that we have to face or they're going to have to face now, one of which is, you know, Harriman City. And I've always had a place in my heart for Harriman. I'm going to try not to get emotional. But since day one, when Harriman was what a be-we child, you know, so to speak, and has grown and doubled the number of homes that we had serviced when I first started in 2007. So it's been an honor to serve all of you, I want to say that. But we were preparing for the new GM and then we learned, went through a very competitive recruitment process and luckily Evan walked through the door. I feel very comfortable that Evan and the team will be able to work with Harriman City going forward on the RFP drafting and so forth. So anyway, I'll keep going back because I don't want to get teary-eyed here. I know that the biggest concerns for residents and some, and some of our cities, well, all of our cities are looking at the fee increase that we needed to implement last year. And so I wanted to just kind of reiterate the why that we had, you know, incurred so many cost increases with salary market adjustments, wage increases for recruitment retention of drivers and so forth. We also implemented a apprentice program, a driver apprentice, to try to help with that recruitment retention. Well, that's an increased cost. And we did that in 2023. But going along, we also know that we could kind of streamline that program. And I'll get into those cost savings in here in just a second. But we did implement a 40% fee increase coming into this year. I know it was felt. I understand that. And the, the board worked with a financial advisory firm to look at the cost, look at what was really needed, the cash balances and so forth. So the recommendation was that 650. The other recommendation that Zion's had for the board and I was to implement another $1.50 going into 2026 and another $1.50 going into 2027. So my goal and our team's goal coming into this year was make sure we don't need to make that fee increase in 2026. And looking forward, trying to prolong any need for a fee increase. But one of the things I want to talk about is the services that include that $26 a month. And of course, it's the weekly curbside garbage and recycling collections. And I know you've received a bid for that particular service. We also have the seasonal container program, rental, excuse me, reservation program. I'll get into more stats down the road. But we provide at least 60 containers per day within the cities that we service. We have can repair replacement within five to seven business days, unless there's some sort of a weird thing that happens with the board member Orin's can. In-house customer service, it's local. You can call us up, you can get online and reach somebody live body right here in the valley. We have seasonal services with central leaf bag and curbside Christmas tree, landfill vouchers for residential and truck, truck and car trailer loads. And then we have a central glass site, which I think you're familiar with over at the old fire station. And this is just a bit of a fee increase history, and I mentioned it before, but we know that hindsight, we waited five years before we raised fees going from 2018 to 23, 2023. And hindsight's always the 2020 part, but it was, it was just rough to really understand. That was way too long to wait and we didn't raise it high enough. So that was why we needed that 650 going forward to sustain us. So what are we doing about this? So these are some cost savings or reduced costs that we've been working on. We're looking at light duty trucks. Where can we adjust and do something differently? With the leaf bag program, we've changed the type of equipment we use there. So we are able to work with our, or right-size our light duty trucks. With a savings of this year, $136,000 and then estimate $7,000 going forward. We have something called the missed cans. We have residents that will call us and tell us that we missed their can. So we started looking into that because we know that to go back and pick up that can, it's about $156 to do that. So yeah, garbage is not cheap. I saw the look on the mayor's face. So right now, what we do is verify that. We have dash cams on the truck. And so we just, the customer service folks are taking time and looking when to get a call from a customer and understand we can't hit every one of them because the customer service folks are busy. So we, so far this year, they've been able to verify whether or not we missed cans. And we ran a test last year and we showed that 46 of the calls that we received and that we reported that were, that were missed were false. And so that's why we implemented this process. And our goal coming into this year was to save $150,000. So far through June, we're not quite on target for that $150,000. But I'll tell you what, I'll take $47,000 of savings any day. And our team is still working on that. Coming into the truck purchases, I think you know that part of the issue was we had 10 trucks delivered to us in 2024 all at once when we hadn't had trucks for over a year and a half, any kind of replacement trucks coming in. So we had a big cash drop down. Looking at the price of those trucks, the collection trucks, just so you know. A CNG truck, which is what we currently have in our fleet, costs about $450,000. And looking at a diesel truck and comparing that, and there was a lot of discussion, including board member Orin talking more about diesel being cleaner and really looking at that. So the board chose to save $400,000. We have eight replacement trucks that we have ordered. And we ordered diesel versus the CNG. We saved $400,000 on that. And then, of course, we're going to test the emissions going forward and make sure that it's really not environmentally impacting what's going on here in our valley. Personnel changes. We were right sizing our resources. And I mentioned the apprentice program. We did reduce the training coordinator position as well as two other positions in the district. We also have another veteran supervisor that retired in May. We're not replacing him. So the bottom line is our team is absorbing the workloads because we understand we need to do the very best we can to prolong the fee increase and do what we can. So altogether, what do these cost savings mean? So for this year, it's a $903,000 savings for 2025. And then ongoing, it is $327,000. And that's mainly from the light duty adjustments and the personnel changes. Getting into, this kind of is going to jump into the sustainability and the recycling collections and the green waste. We really focus on environmental stewardship at the district and looking at trying to wait, to find ways to divert waste away from the landfill. So these are the programs that we use. We have the curbside green waste. We have, of course, the curbside recycling that we pick up. And then we have the glass recycling with the container that we pick up. And so James Kelsey is our sustainability coordinator. He couldn't be here tonight. He does a much better job at going over this information, plus he's better looking than me. But just, just to state that January through June, right now, we have a 19% recycling rate here in Harriman, and that's a slight decrease from 2024. Just so you know, that this is, our goal for diversion is 18%. So we're, Harriman's above it, and right now as a district, we're above it, close to 20%, I believe is what that was, or 19. And then we have the tonnages over here, and that's how you get that diversion rate going forward. You look at what was totally collected and then you take care, you subtract out the sustainable, or excuse me, the recycling materials from that. And then the clean rate for recycling, when residents put in recycling that's clean and they're not putting in garbage, it helps our costs. So James does a lot of education with residents. He attends events any chance he can get to provide the literature out there. We also have a recycling right tool on our website that you can download. And it's on your phone and it's a very useful tool. And looking at the recycling rates and the contamination versus clean rate, just so you know, the EPA reports that the national average for contamination is about, or excuse me, clean rate is 75%. So you can see that the district and Harriman are above the clean rates nationwide, which is fabulous because again, that helps us cut down the, the cost for processing. One of the things I wanted to note is the thing that jumps off the page with Harriman is that as far as the green waste subscribers, there's over 1,800 subscribers out here in Harriman. And you're second to the highest because Mill Creek, my city, has got the most subscribers. But Harriman is second right there, and I think that's very cool. I think that residents are buying into the fact that we need to divert waste. Going into what, how do we save resources? So just so you know, the way we look at what commodities are in that can and understanding that anything we pick up is called a commodity. And so what you see on the left is materials that are collected from Harriman City. And they are sorted at the recycling center to see what's in the blue can and what sort of commodity. So you can see that cardboard is the highest percentage of what is collected and mixed paper second. The, the, the plastic containers as well. And then the contamination is about 20% right there. The illustration off to the right shows you what is saved. And this is by not purchasing or processing new materials. So you have the 1.2 million gallons of water. I told you James would be doing much better than I am. I think the biggest thing to look at is the cubic yards of the landfill space that's saved. So that's 2,100 cubic yards of landfill space that is saved. And it gives you the breakout of the life expectancy of each of the Salt Lake Valley landfill and the Transjordan landfill as well. But going back over to the left picture, what that is, is that the sample sort is sorting out metals, plastics, papers, cardboard, and then they weigh it on here so that we know what each commodity weighs going in. And that's how they look at the sample sorts and what also we can report out to you of what's in that blue can. I don't know if there's any questions. I'll just keep going, I guess, till the end. Here's one of our most popular programs, but I also know right now it's one of the thorn in the sides. As you may know, we used to deliver the containers out there in the street. And we were able to do about 120 containers every single day, dropping them off, picking them up. It's quite the system that we had. That's when we were rich with CDL drivers and able to hire seasonal drivers. And we had 20 each season to pick, to carry that workload. As time went on and starting in 2018, we started seeing those shortages. 2020 with the epidemic and so forth and a driver shortage, we needed to make a change and we pivoted. And we have not been able to go back because we cannot recruit enough drivers. This year, we started out with 10 drivers. We're ending the season with seven. So it's very, it still remains very challenging to get those seasonal drivers in. One of the things that we started this year to try to make an improvement was what we call the tiered priority for reservations. So anyone, they have the early bird access, the early access and the general reservation. So early bird access is anybody that was on the waiting list last year got the first dibs for this year. And then the early access for those who didn't participate in the program at all last year and general reservation for those who received a container last year and there was still availability. So the Harriman stats, as you can see, and before I move on, I do want to point out the pictures to the right. So the then is what it looked like when we had the containers out on the street. So you can imagine when we have 20 staff members, we could handle that. We didn't want to, but we could. And then now it's so much easier with the container in the driveway and the driver can just tarp it and haul it off to the landfill or the transfer station. So stats for this year, we delivered 909 out of the, just over 1,000 requested reservations, the containers for the scrap services. We collected and hauled 512 tons. And I apologize, I started to put the amount that we paid. So it was $21,000 of tipping fees. That's just the tipping fees, not hauling costs. And then for 2024, we delivered 808, excuse me, 84 containers out of the just over 1,000 requested. And honestly, the 60 containers a day, I understand it's not the same level of service, but I'm just happy that we can continue with a bulky waste collection. And 60 containers a day, if you think about it, that's, that's a lot. So I already went over this slide and information and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or try to dodge any bullets that I might need to. You've got to have something for me. I mean, I know my colleague or, you know, competitor, whatever you want to say. I call him the community partner from Waste Management. It's right here behind me. But yes, what can I do for you?
So I appreciate the super program. We utilize it quite a bit. I do miss them being in the roadway sometimes, but I don't miss the two times the trash behind it. And it takes forever to clean it up, it seems like. And it seems like everybody came out of the woodworks and threw everything away. And now it's in my neighbor's driveway and he's like, hey, it's not full. You can throw some stuff in. So it's very, still community organized and it makes good neighbors at that point too. Because they always need help putting the couch in or whatever it might be, and so they allow you space. So I do appreciate that, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Councilmember Hodges. Is that it? You know I want to talk trash, so please, somebody ask me.
Pam, I will say, just, and this is not related to this, but since you're here at your retirement, thank you for your service to this community. I've enjoyed working with you. I've appreciated working with you. So just good luck in retirement. We appreciate, regardless of how these next months go with any discussion, like, we appreciate you and your service and your, you know, your friendship to us as a city. And we wish you the best of luck.
I appreciate that so much. Thank you. It's an honor.
Yeah, I did those remarks, but one other question that I brought up and Sherry might be able to chime in as well. The, when you took into consideration the natural gas vehicles versus the diesel trucks, do we take the cost ratio from fuel and spent gas and longevity and repairs and all those?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. So the original reason why we went to CNG from diesel before was not, it was about the environment, but it was also about the, the cost savings that we could recoup. So we do get a tax credit for purchasing the CNG. We don't know if that's going to be around very much longer, but we've had it over the years. The other thing is we would recoup that additional cost of 30,000, what used to be $20,000 to $30,000 increased cost for a CNG versus diesel. We would recoup that within We would recoup that within three years because of the price of fuel. So I appreciate you asking that question. So it was worth it. Things have changed, and we all know that things change over the years, and what do we have to do? We have to adjust. And so we haven't been able to test the diesel trucks. We did order four diesels, four last year that, when I say four, I mean, they were supposed to be here last year, and we just barely got them. So we wanted to test those first, but we just didn't have that opportunity. So we went ahead and the board made that decision, and I support whatever the board does. And I know going forward, our fleet and asset manager, Andy King, has every intention to test those emissions and see how we do. Check on the maintenance. How are they running that way? We've heard that maintenance is about the same. We haven't run diesel trucks since 2018 was the last ones, last bit that we phased out and replaced with CNG. So just excited to check, well, I'm excited for Evan to have this opportunity to test those out. I hope I answered every one of your questions.
Yeah, that's great.
The other key element in that decision also was resale value.
Yes, thank you.
We got hit hard on resale value on the CNG trucks, but the diesel maintained their value, so we can recoup some of that initial cost of paying for them. And there's a big, well, there's been a lot of emission standards layered on diesel vehicles. And so I'm not sure that the clean air standard really applies the same anymore to, that was part of the decision, was the environmental impact. And there's been such a layering of environmental impacts on diesel that I think that that's mitigated most of those concerns.
Well, I think a lot of people don't understand that natural gas may clean or burn, but by the time we get it out of the ground, process it, burn it, and end of life, it's very, very minimal difference on anything, so.
That's where the controversy lies, right?
And we've seen the gap between CNG and diesel coming at a price closer together, so then it just made sense to diversify.
Yeah, so there's many reasons, and it's always an ongoing, you know, continuous improvement. And I know Evan has that same philosophy. You know, always looking for ways to improve, and as well as my team. And just about the team, I, I just want to say that, you know, it, I've told our team, especially our drivers, equipment operators that are out here every Tuesday through Friday, and then Mondays on Green, this is not personal. This is not anything that any, any one of them did or didn't do. This is Harriman looking to become efficient and cost, more cost effective in the long run. It is hard, and I've told them that, and I continually tell them, this is not about you. It's not personal. I can say that we always get the compliments from the Harriman residents, and they submit awards for them, recognitions all the time. I can say that the, the five drivers, seven drivers that are out here, I would say that all of them have earned, you know, at least $500 so far this year for all the recognitions that the residents turn in for them. So I really appreciate that support, too. It's really awesome.
I will echo that. Again, I've said this to in our board meetings. I'll say that again here publicly also is that this is a due diligence process that I feel like we owe our residents to make sure that we are offering them the best or a good service at the best price possible, because in my mind, it's a tax. We, nobody gets to decide whether or not they pay for it. If you own a home here, you have to pay for garbage removal. So I feel like it's really important for us to always be judicious on that, to make sure that we stay within those parameters. I 100% respect you. I've loved working with you. You run a, you run a good organization, and, and your team of people are professionals, and I really appreciate that. And that includes your team of drivers, because they do a good job, and we're, and we've really appreciated the service. It's just making sure that we're making the right decision for our residents, because it's our job.
Amen. I understand. Yes.
Thanks. And I'm super excited for you to go on to your next adventure.
I'll probably ride through here every now and then.
Right through Harriman. Yep, say hello.
Absolutely. I love it.
Well, thank you, Pam, for your presentation. Welcome, Evan. So I look forward to working with you. Okay, we'll move on to item 9.1, Public Hearing and Consideration of a Resolution Amending the City of Harriman Budget for Fiscal Year 2026. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a few requested budget amendments tonight. So the first one, as you know, being the board members of the fire service area, I did propose moving the construction costs for the rebuild of this fire station into this budget. One part of that is, part of the rebuild is impact fee eligible. The total's about 4.3 million. Of course, we don't have 4.3 million in our impact fee balance account. We could go on for hours about the, the problems with the impact fees, but we're going to move things along tonight. I did, doing the final year-end analysis, I did discover we have about an additional 583,000 that we can put towards the fire station rebuild than what was originally budgeted. Next, in Development Services, this is a request for community development software to give the council just a brief overview of this. So a few years ago, the city had gone down a path by trying to build a more customized product using a vendor. That vendor has been purchased out by another vendor, and they have slowly been taking away resources towards that custom development. And it does seem like a route that this vendor does not want to go. So staff feels at this point it is better to look for a package solution that will cover everything without heavy modification or custom programming. The estimated cost right now is $750,000. However, the RFP is open right now, so that number may change. And then just as a reminder, in the Development Services Fund, these are costs that are covered by permit fees and building fees. So it is designed to recover the cost, and there is sufficient fund balance to cover this new software and still maintain their fund balance minimums that the policy views the council had approved. And then finally, in the Capital Projects Fund, as staff had brought a couple of recommendations for corridor preservation recommendations, we did receive awards for that. So that is for Harriman Boulevard widening and bike lanes for about $2.6 million. So we will receive funding back from the county once we make those purchase, and then the Fire Station 103 replacement being budgeted in Capital Projects. And with that, are there any questions before the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. At this point, we will open the public hearing on this item. See no public comment. Look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Teddy. Second by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Look for a motion on this item.
Make a motion to approve the resolution number R47-2025, amending the fiscal year 2026 Harriman City budget.
Motion by Sherry.
I'll second.
Second by Tara. Tara?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Look for a motion on the consent agenda. Thank you, Kyle.
I'll make a motion to approve consent as written.
Second.
Motion by Teddy, second by Jared. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Item 11.1, Discussion and Consideration of a Master Development Agreement with LTF Real Estate Company for a Commercial Development Located at 4684 West 126 South. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up to our work meeting discussion on August 13th. And before we get started, I just wanted to start off by saying the Planning Commission heard this item on August 6th and did recommend approval for the, this master development agreement. Location of this project is at 4684 West 12600 South, the northeast corner of Mountain View Corridor and Harriman Boulevard. The Planning Commission approved this site plan for the, for a subdivision and conditional use. This includes two lots. The lot with the, the lifetime center on it is 12.6 acres, and the green parcel off to the right in the upper right corner of the site is 0.96 acres. And there hasn't been a use identified for that site yet, but it is a two-lot subdivision. That building, as you can see, is 102,000 square feet, and it's a, going to be, proposed to be a world-class athletic club, fitness center. The master development agreement had four key requests, as listed here. First one is in regard to fencing. Second one's regard to signage. Third one's in regard to building materials, and the fourth one's in regard to transportation impact fees. I'll just go through each one of those items one by one here. Item one, for the fencing, this was the item that was brought up in the public comment period. And so there are three cross-sections shown here on the map, A, B, and C, corresponding to the, the horizontal cross-sections underneath. Where the building's located is Cross Section B. And that might be kind of hard to see, but that is a 50-foot setback from the property line to the building edge, proposed in this, in this plan. The requirement, as Councilman Henderson said, is it's 20 feet if the building's under 35 feet tall. This building is over 35 feet tall, so it's a 30-foot required setback. They are proposing to provide an additional setback and a landscape berm in lieu of installing a precast fence. So your difference would be a building 30 feet off the property line, likely no berm, and just the required minimal landscaping or the enhanced landscaping. So staff feels that this is more of a betterment than, than just a precast wall, and which is why we're proposing to bring this to you. And then as, as you'd spoken, the wrought iron fence would lock off access from behind the pool area and the, the center, the building itself. And so that would only be accessed by staff for the lifetime or by maintenance people taking care of the landscaping. It wouldn't be open to the public. Was there another question in there?
I was just, this is all wrought iron. If I look at A, all that little dash is wrought iron around the pool.
Around the pool, I, the applicants here, we can probably ask them exactly.
He's shaking his head, yes. So everything around there is wrought iron, so nobody's getting into that. It's all wrought iron. Okay.
I think it showed it on that previous slide a little bit on the, there you go.
This one?
Nope, sorry, go back. That's a better, but seeing that.
Oh, yeah, you can see it there.
Okay.
I got, I have a better picture of that coming up, so. Okay, so, so that's item number one. The request is, in lieu of the precast fence and minimum setbacks, they propose to do an enhanced setback, enhanced landscaping, and not have to do the precast wall. Another reason for this request is just liability and concerns and issues going into people's backyards trying to remove the fence. So then we likely end up with a precast fence right up against the vinyl fence, which creates a, a gap. We usually have weeds and issues going on with that. So we ran into that with a lot of commercial developments. Most of the time, a commercial development, like a gas station, would have patrons right up against the property line. This one won't. It does not intend to have patrons right up against the property line, so, so that's why this request is here. Item number two, the request.
Sorry, will you go back to C?
Oh, yep, sorry.
It looks like where the parking or where there'd be traffic right there, there's not much of a berm there, right?
I don't think this is, well, it is showing, there's, there's not a berm. There's a, there's a rock swell to catch the stormwater and take it to the east, is what it looks like. So, yeah, and that area is up against the city park. And I have some photos at the very end here that'll show that fence and that property.
Also, that's over here. Yeah.
Yeah, right here.
Yep.
Item two, for the major corridor sign. This sign would normally be allowed on a project this size, except for the lot. Needs, it has to be 20 acres per the ordinance. They're requesting the approval to put a large, larger sign that is in compliance with the major corridor sign overlay zone. They meet two of the three requirements for this site. They have to be along a UDOT corridor. They have to have at least 200 feet of frontage. And then the other one is, the site has to be 20 acres or larger. They're requesting to put this style sign on the site where they're 13.6 acres, and they had no ability to expand their, their lot size. The digital displays on this sign will be facing towards 126 South and Mountain View Corridor. Where you see the Lifetime logo is actually a static display that will hide the mechanical components of the sign that are running the, the digital display. So it will, from what I understand, it's not going to be lit, and it'll just be a static display, just to kind of act as a cover or shroud over that equipment. The third one is the building elevation materials. In the work meeting, council asked for some more color variation. This is the site, or the plan that had come back from the architect of the project. As you can see, they've added some, some darker colors around the sign on the east and west elevations, and also a little bit of additional color on the back.
Did they get rid of those smaller signs and opt for the bigger Lifetime signs? Is that what that looks like?
I think they were the same size. They just show up more because of the dark background.
Okay.
And so this request is essentially to follow Code 10-12-15D, which says the applicant can request an exception from the 60% brick and stone from the city council if they're part of a large commercial project and have a building larger than 40,000 square feet. And then the other request is to allow more than 20% stucco products, which is in Code 10-12-15B1. So those are the requests for the, the building elevation materials. And then we have a little, a rendering again. This is the better view. You can see the wrought iron fence around the pool area and the entrance and, and how this, this is intended to look. These elevations are included in the development agreement, and so they would be the design guidelines for this project. That's what all the submittals would be reviewed against. The last item request in the MDA is a reduction in the transportation impact fee. They're requesting, requesting to reduce it from approximately 1.6 million to 350,000. The reasoning for that is that 12600 South is going to be transferred to UDOT upon the completion of the realignment of U111. When that happens, the projects in our master plan total approximately $3.975 million. Those requirements will go away from the master plan, and the city will not, will no longer be responsible to pay for those improvements. And we're currently updating the master plan to consider that, and we're anticipating the impact fee will likely be reduced in this area because of that.
If I might, like, in addition to that, when Mountain View is kind of finished through there, we anticipate them digging a lot of this up and redoing that area as well?
Yep.
Right, so rather than require them as that impact fee, right, to then go in and finish all of that, or is that a separate piece?
Nope, this is all the same piece.
So for me, that's a big part of allowing this, in my mind, is not just the jurisdictional transfer, because that's in the future, and who knows what happened in the future, as far as that transfer. But we do know that Mountain View is being completed from the south to the north. It's coming this way first. And it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to require a lot of money to go in the ground and then just dig it back up again.
Yep. And with that, yeah, trying to keep UDOT's costs down low with their project. We don't want to have them come in and put retaining walls and things in that UDOT will just have to rip out. So, so Lifetime's proposing to, with this project, in lieu of doing the full frontage improvements, doing an asphalt trail, eight feet, but they'll work with the city engineer, because there are utilities along that to determine if it needs to narrow in some places. Doing the required street lighting, and then rock mulch or native seed mix in lieu of our standard landscaping in the front, just to keep things better for UDOT when they do come through and do their project. And so that's the, the items. I do have some photos to show here at the very end. These are some photos I took before it got rainy. You can see the vinyl fence here at the park. Those two yellow stakes are high-pressure gas line. And my anticipation is Lifetime was working with Kern River Gas and could not get approval to put landscaping in this area. So I believe it'll be very difficult to put precast where the, the gas line runs through. Trying to get approval with Kern River, they, they will not want us to dig in there and put footings in where that's located. See, the one on the left is the, the corner of the, the city park. The fence is in pretty good repair. There are trees, and there's vegetation up against it on the, the Lifetime side of the property. The other photo is from Mountain View Corridor, looking down on the site. And you can see the vinyl fence and the, the site and how low it sits. And then a couple more pictures by the park. The one on the left is kind of looking up. You can see the undeveloped state of the site and then the, the park on the other side. And the, the one on the right is the only damage I could really find on the fence is, there's a hole in the top of it. there's a hole in the top of it, and if it does get broken, this, this fence is the city's responsibility. The other fences, there are 13 homes along this site, they are part of the Liberty Villages subdivision, and the park is 307 feet for the first part, and then, and then the homes start, and the typical home width is about, or lot width for the homes is 52 feet. There's some variation on the end lots because they're, they're corners or cul-de-sacs, so.
So that C is pretty much all what we're looking at right here, the C.
You might get into the first lot, but yeah, it's, let's go back to that.
The one that's closer, there's not any houses. I was, I'm just concerned from, heaven forbid, somebody's parking, never happens, they hit the gas instead of the brake.
Yeah.
And goes up and over that berm.
That was my concern too.
Yeah.
Because there isn't a berm.
Well, there's a, yeah, the swell and the drainage and some rocks and some vegetation, but they could end up in a backyard frequently.
There's a standard curb though, right? I mean, this is a standard. Standard curb, mhm. And there's 40, 42 feet nine inches, and you can kind of see the line work, it's hard to see, but there shouldn't be anyone parking towards any homes north-south. There's that alley, and everyone will park towards the Lifetime building, and so the first parking that would occur with cars pointing to the north would be along the park.
Are there not, there're stalls here, though?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's that swell. Yeah.
I think where C is at, if you, yeah, do we have an aerial photo?
Yeah.
You don't have an aerial? It's coming right where the road bends down.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, you can kind of see.
You can kind of see the lines there, you can see that curve in the road. So where those, that very first stall is that points north and south, that's, that's like the very edge of the park and the private, and the property. That's the property line you see.
Okay.
Because this is probably the first lot right here, right?
Yep.
Gotcha, okay.
Because that was my concern, was that there, there's not a berm there.
Or even an elevated curb or bollards or something, but yeah.
But it, but it looks like it's mitigated because it's the park, it's right there.
Yeah.
Well, and then even with that area, if they hop over the curb and the vegetation and, and miss, miss a few trees.
Yeah, a few trees.
It's a six, looks like it's a six-foot drop into the, the gravel swell, they'll end up nose-down in the ditch.
Exactly, yeah.
About six feet, yes.
And it, and as far as privacy, a precast would still be the same, six foot versus a six foot, that you're not going to get any more privacy per se because this, the height is the same, correct?
Height's the same, and precast isn't really structurally handled to take a car any better than anything else, the, the panels fall. We've seen it happen along here, so.
Well, I would say 7-Elevens in my neighborhood, right, and those neighbors did not like that we went through and changed out their fence. I mean, it ended up being a bigger hassle, and because of the way they had to dig down, I mean, it actually ended up being a little bit lower, truly. It was still six foot, but, so they all wished they could go back and stick to the, like, truly, they wished they could go back and stick to the vinyl, because.
We had a double fence there, because they, I think in a few places they would.
They took most of it down, yeah.
They take it down.
Yeah.
I did like, sorry, I did like what Jared said, though, about, I think the biggest problem is if kids get behind there and start kicking fences or things like that, right? And how do we mitigate that?
That was Teddy's suggestion last time, was to make, was to make sure that that, that wrought iron is, goes off the edge of the building there so that there's no public access.
Yeah, I like that, so that just people stay out of there.
And that, that's all the way from the pool section to the east side of, of that building.
That's how it's currently written in the agreement, yes.
What is that alley for?
Um.
What alley?
Have the applicant answer that.
Yes, please, yes.
Right here, is this what you're talking about?
Services, I think.
Yeah, because I don't know how you'd get to it.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dan Beavers of Lifetime, I've been eager to come over here and speak. Blake's been doing such a good job. The drive lane that tucks behind the building there is just a turnaround for fire and trash.
Hammerhead.
So it's purely just for movement.
Oh, it's like a little hammerhead?
Yep, a little hammerhead, yep.
And then what is, and this other thing that looks almost like a drive, it's just that gravel for stormwater?
To the right of it?
Yeah.
Yep, that's the conveyance for the stormwater.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Question, so on the, where's that precast wall in Mountain View come down? Is that that white box blockout? Is that what that looks like off the highway?
Yeah.
So it's going to hide quite a bit of that building?
Go back to that photo.
Yeah, there you go.
And I think that's 12 or 14 feet tall, it's.
Mhm.
It really provides a lot of privacy from the freeway or the highway.
I'll just say thanks for listening to our concerns last time and, and including those, the building materials. No, it wasn't not a huge deal, but something that I'm going to drive by every day, that'll look better.
Understood.
For the, the fence, and just go back to, and anytime, it's at the mayor's discretion, but anytime somebody shows up at a meeting, right, I want to make sure that they are heard and have, have an opportunity. I hope that, that that makes an, I don't know if it's okay if I invite them up?
Please, yes.
Our resident, David, if you have questions or concerns, or if my explanation was satisfactory, the litmus test for me with these things is always, if that was my house, what would I want?
Yeah.
Right, and the choices between one or the other. If we require that six-foot precast wall, the setback is, is that, but the building height adjustment is 30 feet, so it's flat, and they've said that they will do, if we want them to do precast wall, they'll do it, but it will be the 30-foot setback with that, you know, over 35-foot story building, story, 35-foot building. If I'm there, I want, I'd want that to be as far away as I can to reduce that incline, and then also to have a berm that's, that has trees along it, and to make sure that it's secure, so we don't have the kids running back there to stop the gate in or the fence in, like that, that seems preferable to me.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of. Can you come on, David, can you come up? Yeah, you're welcome to come on up.
I wasn't aware of the details, like the further away with the, the vinyl fence and everything, but I agree, like, I mean, we just kind of want some decent separation because, again, we live there. Imagine if you were in one of these houses.
As I said, that's the litmus test for me, is if I lived there.
I defer to your judgment on that. It sounds like that the berm idea might not be a terrible idea. I was only aware of, like, just from what the email I received, because I asked about the meeting before, the only details I saw was either a vinyl fence or precast fence, there wasn't any talk about the berm and stuff in the email I received, so I wasn't privy to that information. Now knowing that, I might be inclined to agree with you about the berm idea and being further away, because I also would like it as far away as possible, because again, we live there, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again for coming.
Yes, thank you for being here, David. Okay.
That was mine, too. That was my biggest concern about the whole project, was the comments from the residents minimized the impact and making sure that, well, like, even like, making sure that nobody's overshooting the berm and their car ends up in somebody's thing. And vinyl plus their heart, but kids like to come in and all kinds of stuff, and so I think it's important that, that we make sure that nobody's getting back there.
Well, and even, even the noise, right? So 20, 20 more feet.
Yeah.
Helps having a berm plus trees, right, is going to help a lot more with sound even from, say, the pickleball courts and the pool, et cetera, than 20 feet with a fence, that noise gets a lot closer and louder, so.
Even when you talked about even like a shadow of a building, if you're 20 foot further this way, it, it makes a big difference.
Saves a garden.
Yeah, exactly.
Can save a garden, yeah.
I think it's important to point out, too, it's not just the top of the berm that's landscaped, it's.
Trees.
The berm that's landscaped, too, so you get multi-layers of landscaping buffer, so.
And noise buffer, really.
Noise, and, yep.
Yeah, I know that when we had our NRHOA, the amenity on our side, that vinyl fence did not last a day. We'd go fix it, then it'd be down again, and then, so we went precast. But I think, I think all these accommodations that the, the applicant has shown and, and the rendering, I mean, it, it looks awesome, so.
Let's do this, let's do a motion.
Okay, motion to approve ordinance number 18-2025, approving the master development agreement with Lifetime Fitness for commercial development located at 4684 West 112600 South.
Take one of those ones out.
One, two.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, well, I'm just reading.
I know you are, I'm just.
At a 12600 South.
Motion by Jared, second by Teddy, Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yep.
Sherry?
Yay.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yay as well, yes as well. Thank you, we look forward to having you. Let's get it going, so, appreciate it, you guys. Okay, item 11.2, adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code.
I read it twice, yeah.
Todd.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to present on this. It's very short, we are adding the International Property Maintenance Code to the provisions that also adopt the International Building Code, the International Fire Code, and the purpose of this was to allow the municipality a process on dealing with properties that are in disrepair, and it, and it lays out that process in this code section. So by adopting it by reference, we now have a tool to go after properties that we need to do something about, like falling structures, that sort of thing.
I'm just curious, it was surprising to some, to me somewhat, that, I mean, it's ICB, it's not ICBO anymore, whatever it is, it's IPMC.
Yeah.
Anyway, we've adopted all those others, I'm just curious, it's interesting that I assume that this was already part of what we already had in policy.
Yeah, in looking at other municipalities, a few of them have adopted, adopted it outright, like we are potentially tonight, but a lot of municipalities have not, so they don't really have a good mechanism to go after these, other than maybe nuisance. And there probably are municipalities that are going after falling structures under the nuisance code, but that is a much more cumbersome process.
Do you see cons as far as adopting it? Is it gonna, I don't know, tell me the cons.
The cons is we're, we're going to be, come familiar with code that we're not used to implementing, so it might take a little bit of time to figure out how to implement this process through code enforcement. And then if we find issues along the way, what we would likely do is come back with an amendment saying that this provision of the International Property Maintenance Code doesn't work, we're going to amend this portion of it, and which we're allowed to do.
So we're blanking it, because I know, like, a lot of times, state code will be like, you have to abide by at least this, you can make it stronger, but this would say we can make it not as strong, we can do whatever provisions we want.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does it have clear interpretations, or is it pretty ambiguous? Like, if you read it, lay a person can read it, any citizen can read it and understand it?
It's very readable. It's not like, maybe reading statutes where they're a little bit more challenging to read, but yeah, I, I think it's very readable.
How many pages are readable?
Hundreds.
Just kidding.
Hundreds.
We'll get you a copy, Sherry. I think Chief was carrying around earlier, that doorstop.
Don't wake Chief up. Okay, let's do a motion on this, I'll look for a motion on this.
I'm making motion to approve ordinance number 19-2025, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code.
Motion by Sherry?
Second.
I'll give it to Jared. Tara?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
I don't know about yes, that motion carries. 11.3, consideration to approve a reduction in the scope of work for the Old Town Waterline Project to provide adequate owner's contingency. JB, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, it's a mouthful of a title, appreciate you allowing me to give an update on the project, as well as also solicit some direction from the council. So tonight, I want to first just kind of start off, of course, this is in the Old Town area of a project, essentially depicted and reflected by these blue lines. I will clarify that there's a small piece of this project that also is up at 118th South and Mountain View Corridor. That piece has been completed, of course, but, so this exhibit just doesn't show that. The overall purpose of the project is to upsize undersized lines, as well as replace aging infrastructure, essentially abandon that aging infrastructure. It was designed a while back, back in 2018, and then, of course, the intent there was we were, we designed this project in varying little pieces that we would just do year by year, little by little, but in 2023, we were awarded EPA funds, and of course, it was enough for us to be able to capture all of the projects. And then a construction began in January 2025. And so today, though, however, we want to take a step back, excuse me, and, and bring the budget situation to the council and solicit some direct, direction based on the, the way construction has been going. We have been incurring some change orders that have been significant and have eaten into our contingency or owner's contingency, such that we're at a crossroads. So the project budget, of course, is a little over 4 million, original contract is 3.5 million, and then, so prior to today, there's approximately $183,000 in change orders that have already been approved, and today we're looking at proposed change order cost of $134, $135,000. And of course, if approved, it leaves us with not a lot of remaining contingency, approximately 12,000. And I, I apologize for this exhibit being pretty busy, I'll explain this and take my time just a little bit here. Top left, that's a list of all the pending change orders, as well as a prior approved change orders. And then the map, the yellow portion is depicting portions that have been completed. Blue is not yet complete, and we're going to talk about what we're proposing as staff, and that is that red piece is the piece that we're proposing to remove from the scope of the work that would allow us to bolster our owner's contingency and, you know, to hold on to, and to capture any additional unforeseen items to complete the project, at least in that blue, those blue lines. And so that's, that's what the staff's current proposal is tonight. Before I maybe move on to my last slide, are there any questions pertaining this exhibit or any other at large?
JB, if you would, I think, I think it's important to, to understand what some of those changes are and, and how they might come about. In hindsight, I think, we typically use that 10% contingency.
Yeah.
For some projects, that's fine, underground, for, in a greenfield area where what we are used to doing in Harriman, which is new utilities in an area, 10% is probably fine. You're, you're concerned about soils, then what you might, you might hit rock that you weren't expecting, have to do some rock excavation. As soon as you move into an older part of town and are replacing existing lines, you hit things that, in hindsight, we probably should have had a larger one in other place, we'd always do 15 to 20 on an existing older system. One of these caught my attention is that there's a, number 11, $31,000 for a pipe change. That's not that we changed the pipe we were putting in, our, our documents that we have in engineering showed it as a 10-inch pipe.
Correct, and it was a 12.
When we dug down there and start working, it's not a 10-inch pipe, it is a 12-inch pipe we're working into. So the as-built drawings we had from this area aren't very good. I don't know when that line went in, but, you know, 10, 12, it didn't matter to them, it, it matters to us to know what's there. Put that in, that's not a little bit more volume, going from a 10-inch pipe to a 12-inch pipe is significant volume. I, I don't know if our models had accounted for that, but it's those kinds of things, our additional asphalt depth. We build our streets to a certain standard now, we know what that asphalt, when you, I, I know this will surprise you, but they, they're like really thick.
Yeah.
In this part of town, in these older streets. I don't know if they just kept overlaying them over time, and so if we're going back trying to repair them, we have significant, we're just running into things that we were not, again, in hindsight, probably should have stepped back and said, this is our oldest part of our, our system, built well before the city was a city. Maybe a little bit more in design, a little bit more contingency, contingency to see, well, what is actually underground? Because I think those are some of the things I'm saying, we have others where we go through, and all of a sudden, there's a connection there. we have others where we go through, and all of a sudden, there's a connection there. It's not on anybody's plans, it goes someplace, and they're getting water, it's just, we didn't know that was there, so.
Yeah.
I just, I think that's important to point out for the citizens.
Yeah.
So additional asphalt, that, so it just means they were required to provide more asphalt to the tune of $112,000, 'cause it was thicker than they had anticipated?
Yeah.
For the repair?
That's correct.
And same as on 134th South, that one surprised me a little bit, 'cause that's pretty much a new road right there, so why was there an additional $33,000 on that one?
Uh, good question, and, and I'll speak to that, so the piece that's $33,000, and I, I will say the cost of asphalt is, is significantly more than that, what most people anticipate, including even engineers and contractors right now, 'cause it's a little volatile, at least the market is, that $33,000 is just to capture the cost, and it's off the page almost, but there's a little teeny yellow ribbon down there, along the 134th piece, um, it's just the asphalt for that piece. The original waterline was designed to not go in the roadway for the entire segment of 134th, and there was a conflict with the power corridor, where it would necessitate moving it into the asphalt, so now if we, so any line that we install along 134th would require asphalt that was never originally intended.
Makes sense. You just foresee all this, where is your magic ball?
Yeah, I, I will add, and I, Nathan, I appreciate that point, that, um, one item on here was owner-initiated, um, that is item number four, um, the, they bid it as a particular sand, and we wanted a different sand that would be less abrasive to our piping material, and that was an incurred cost of $7,000. Everything else are, I, I, they're not owner-initiated, but just by circumstance, um, in opening up the road. We recognize that there's a lot of, um, you know, things that can be unforeseen, and I, adding to Nathan's takeaway of, of 15 to 20% contingency for owner's contingency going into a project similar to this, was a big key takeaway for us, but nonetheless, we're in a situation where we have 10% contingency, so we kinda take the step back and say, hey, should we, should we continue with the project, um, with the entire scope? And of course, that would require some additional budget, um, or do we do what we're proposing here, where does we remove a piece of that project, um, so that we can bolster and finish? And I keep jumping back and forth, I apologize, but this blue segment is incomplete, and if we could take what we would otherwise spend in that red piece, and roll it into the blue to float that contingency, are there any questions on that? Okay. And of course, the other option is, we would, uh, need to amend the budget, um, by, we estimate around $430,000 to, to capture that, and the majority of that cost is in the additional asphalt along 134th South.
If I might, Mr. Mayor. One of the other things, I, I think it's important, we got the grant in early '23, based off a budget we had done in '22, we didn't, we could not complete all the paperwork with, we didn't get the final approvals from the EPA, uh, until we went to bid.
Right.
And so, this was a really weird one, I think Justin is here.
Yeah.
This qualified for what's called a categorical exclusion underneath the National Environmental Policy Act, you have to go through. In my career, that is typically 30 to 60 days, it was six months? Longer, longer than that to get the approval, that, it's just, I don't know if they just couldn't process it, if they were having staffing issues, but we waited for a very, very long time to get the approval to move forward with these federal funds. And so, it, I think that also plays a little bit into some of the things we're seeing, and that they had bid it, but we had probably anticipated, uh, when we bid it, yeah, we're, we, engineers always build in a little bit into their estimates, and I think we thought we had that, but it just also time ate into that, so.
I, I like that, and so to put that into perspective, we, it normally takes us about two months to, from the time that we publicly advertise a project, to the time we award a contract, or this particular project took over six months to follow the EPA's process, so adding to that, but thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Um, on the previous slide, and, so you said, um, forego the, the red at the bottom in favor of the finishing the blue at the top?
Correct.
And is that just because of the anticipated roadwork?
Oh, thank you.
Next year, is, is that why that's a higher priority? Or that by the blue's a higher priority?
Correct, and, and I, I would, thank you, that's actually a good question, and I know Justin's back there saying, why didn't you mention that? Um, so, the 134th project, we actually anticipate to widen, and it's a sunken cost at that time anyway, for us to remove that asphalt, um, it's more of an economical decision, but I will add that the aging infrastructure in blue, we anticipate is a bit older than the line in 134th. 134th is on for improvement, because it doesn't meet the minimum sizing requirement. We, hydraulically, as far as today, we're, we're okay with that six-inch line, but it does need to be upsized to meet our standard, as well as, um, the state's as well, and so that's why the blue is favored over the red.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, on those proposed change order costs, that covers what we think the blue is gonna be?
The, so the change order that's before you is to pay for everything, the, these are, most of these are actually already incurred costs, or they are installed, so the 130 that we're gaining from doing this is to cover potential unforeseen items in the blue that have not yet been realized.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss finishing it with the 134th widening project.
Yes, and that's slated, it's in our capital projects plan, pending approval and review for 2031.
Okay.
No motion?
Any concerns with going with option one, then? Okay, yep, I'll look for a motion, then.
Make a motion to approve a reduction in the scope of work for the Old Town Waterline Project to allow for adequate owner's contingency to finish the project as outlined in option one.
Second.
Motion by Sherry, second by Jared, Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, that motion carries, thank you, JB. Okay, we'll go to 11.4, discussion and consideration of a, of a property use agreement with Utah Soccer Federation to construct a park at approximately 14002 South, Sentinel Ridge Boulevard. Wendy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, it's nice to be here in front of you with this item tonight, um, this has been a long time coming, a discussion we've been having for several years with the Utah Soccer Federation at this point, um, just for public consumption, just to do a little background, um, they have a legacy program that funds fields primarily for soccer, we'll just say rectangular fields, because we would use them in the offseason for other sports as well. Their proposal was originally to build the park for preferred use at the park, um, they would reserve 12, um, weeks in the spring, 12 weeks in the fall, at their preferred times, and the rest of the year would be, um, open to the city to either rent out to other organized sports, or just for public access. In our recent meetings with them, we had been discussing our requirements for landscaping and park strips, and the requirement for a restroom, which we have at all of our fields that we rent out to organized groups, um, and they, um, requested that the city cover those costs for the landscaping and the park strips and the restroom facility, so I'm coming back to you today, so we can have those discussions and see, um, how you feel. We estimate about a million dollars in improvements, uh, from the city for the park strips and the restrooms, that might be a little bit high, but as you just heard, project costs are kind of all over the place, depending on when we go out to bid, um, so just wanted to have some discussion, when we go back to meet with them again, um, what direction you're, you're headed with this, with this extra incurred cost, this is something that is not currently budgeted, um, through any city funds, whether it be park impact fees or the general fund, so we would have to work some magic with Kyle to figure out what projects we're gonna bump in the future, but, um, that's the proposal on the table this evening, and open to your discussion and comments. One thing that I did think about while I was, um, sitting here was, maybe we split the cost of the restroom facility, that's an alternative that I didn't consider before, um, they pay for their percentage cost, and, that they're using every year, and then the city maybe picks up the other percentage, just another thought to put on the table that we hadn't discussed before.
Thoughts on that? I know we kinda talked and worked about, work meeting about us.
My.
And I don't mind that, Wendy, I, but if we're gonna do the park strip, too, trying to figure out how we can.
For me, my, at least, my suggestion of work meeting is what I would suggest again.
Okay.
I think that we pick up the cost for the park strip, that kind of landscaping would be what we would kinda normally do, and then they pick up the cost for the restroom.
Okay.
Mayor, can I clarify?
Yes.
Is it that the city would be reimbursing for the construction of the park strip? Or that the, the, um, association is not required to put in the park strip, and the city would be obligated to do that?
My preference would be for us to reimburse them as part of the project with a not-to-exceed number, that would be my preference.
Agree.
Yeah, likewise.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me real quick, Mayor, I'm, I'm not opposed to Wendy's suggestion of some sort of cost reduction for our usage of the facility when it's not them, I don't know how you percentage that out, though? I, that's, it gets, but, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't think it's, I, is it their field, is it their full burden? I don't know.
Again, I just look at it as kind of the equality, right? The majority of the use, the majority of the.
Well, the prime time, the prime usage, it's very.
Is all that, yeah.
That's the land.
The land.
Cost of the land.
Yeah, if you're looking at the 50/50 partnership, we're bringing in the land, and having looked at doing this sort of thing with the club that I'm involved with in, in other areas, land is, is the most valuable part, right? Especially in populated areas, to bring, to bring something like that to the table, like I said, that's, that value is close to $3 million, $1 million on its own.
So if we took a T-shirt, we'd still be in the far positive on the city side for my proportion of the land?
Probably close to equal, I mean.
With, with them bringing the bathrooms?
Yeah.
They're gonna bring the fields and the bathroom?
Okay.
We're gonna bring the land?
Right.
And our land is gonna be landscaped, if they'll do it, we'll reimburse them.
Okay. Okay.
All right. We'll go back to them.
Okay, do you need a motion, then, or no?
I think that, we saw enough heads, I, I'm gonna look, Todd, do you, do you feel like we need a motion? They're gonna have to approve it when it comes back.
Calls for motion on here, but.
The agreement, the agreement and all of that will actually come back to you in a future meeting.
Okay.
So, maybe we wait to motion until we have a, a confirmed agreement, and, um, we'll be ready to go then.
Do we table or anything? Table, nope, just move on, just be done, okay? Okay, thank you, Wendy. Okay, that brings us to the close of our meetings tonight, uh, future meetings, Planning Commission meeting September 3rd, 7 o'clock, next city council meeting September 10th at 7 o'clock, Hunger Harriman food truck roundup every Monday, out front here at Crane Park, starting at 5:00. And that's it, I think, coming up, so, with that, I will look for a motion to go back to closed.
I'll make a motion to recess the regular meeting and go in, regular, recess the city council meeting and go into a closed meeting for the following purpose, as provided in Utah State Code annotated 52-4-205. For C and D still, probably, so, strategy session, discuss pending and reasonable intimate litigation, and D, strategy session, discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, discuss the progress of development agreement, project proposal, and/or financing proposal related to the development or land owned by the city.
Okay, motion by Teddy? Second by Tara, Tara?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, so we'll move back into Fort Harriman, same people that were there before, as lo, as well as Mike Mays and his.